All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order, verify compliance with open meetings law notification and adopt the agenda. If you can please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. Next up is our Whitno High School Student Council Report.
Hi, I'm Daniel Clarizio. I'm the treasurer for the Student Council here at Whitno High School. I'll be going over what we have planned for the upcoming months. So we have a blood drive planned for Wednesday, March fourteenth. We are expected to have about seventy-five to eighty people show up to help with our donation process. Will, there's...
Oh, the Scottson.
The Scottson Blood Center is working with us to complete this goal. We have a gives back week which is, which takes place the week before we go off for spring break. We have, we are lucky to have our social worker help propose an idea for a resource closet, which would help students here who are in need. So with Monday, we would begin our initial collection for the resource closet. Throughout the week, we have specific items that we ask for. As you can see on Wednesday and Thursday, we have spirit days for the students to have fun and just kind of get in the mood of helping each other out and others in need. On Wednesday, or on Tuesday, we have the Mr. Falcon Pageant, which I'll be going over shortly. And on Wednesday, we also have our hair donation, which I will be going over again. On Thursday, we have a basketball game if we reach four thousand points, which students can earn through donating. The Mr. Falcon Pageant will be an all-boys pageant. It'll be going over certain styles of dressing, their talents. We ask for people to, for, to vote for their favorite boy by donating or...
We're throwing out some ideas.
Some ideas.
But money needs to be collected.
Yes.
That's what we've determined.
Through the money we collect, it will be split between either the Sojourner Family Peace Center and the resource closet that is being put together. So this pageant will be taking place on Tuesday, March twenty-seventh at six PM. Our hair dona-, our hair donation will be able to be carried out through the help of the local hairstylist in the area. They are graciously coming in for free to help us with our cause. We are working with children with hair loss because they need our help in order to get at least twenty people to donate their hair. So if anyone wants to volunteer, we'll accept that. They ask for eight inches of hair from each person, and so far, we do have the adequate amount of people to come in and donate. But more always appreciated. And I think that is it.
Stephen and I'll be in line for the eight inches of hair donation.
Thank you for the recipients.
Thank you for the great report. Any questions or comments?
So on the, talk, can you talk about the fourteenth, March fourteenth? The, um, you got a blood donation and the, uh, what you doing for the kids in Parkland, Florida?
Yeah, that is also the day of the school walkout.
Yeah, so, um, we, the Student Council isn't running that, but we, yeah, but we have several members who are, who have been very heavily involved in it. So I, I actually think it's kind of nice that our blood drive happened to be on that day because it's kind of a nice, like, let's remember lives and hey, why don't you come on down and help save a life? So, um, we'll, we'll definitely have some kids involved, but it sounds like it's for sure gonna be a really good event. We're getting the kids to think about empathy and, you know, standing with other schools, so, um, I think, I think it's gonna be really good.
What time is the blood drive?
All day.
All day.
We still have slots open if you would like one.
I can't.
Okay.
Right?
But you'll donate.
You, no, please don't.
I would bleed out.
You should, yes, you should.
Neither have to come.
But the hair donation.
Well...
We're good.
Give me a couple of months. I used to, I used to have long hair. I don't like it anymore. Not, not that.
Any other?
Thank you.
Questions or comments?
I have a question on the resource closet, so I know that, um, that she's helping put that together. Where will that be located within her office or where, or how will you let students know? Is that just because through the, through, she'll know being the social worker who needs it, or what's the plans for that?
Yeah, she's looking currently for a good space to house things in so that the whole counseling office knows. Uh, my original suggestion was to use like the old district office, and then it got flooded, which is really fun.
It did.
So, uh, right now, I know that during this week, she's just gonna collect things in her office, and I think she's just so happy to have the stuff right now that figuring out where we put it, um, will really come later. So, but yeah, it's something that the whole counseling office will know is available, um, so that if there's ever any reason to think that kids might need things, we'll all go to find things.
Good.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is item four, discussion, future action items. A is policy zero-one-six-six point two, board member protocols. Uh, so again, we created these back in the fall. We said we'd see how they go, and we've obviously been using the yellow cards. Just wanted to circle back now and, um, have a discussion, see if, if we're ready to put them in place and move forward. So any questions or comments on them?
We didn't change anything?
No, it's everything we talked about, and we actually sent these back out in December. It was a board agenda item, but then not all board members were present, so we tabled it at that point again, but nothing has changed since then. Any questions? Okay, then it'll come again in two weeks, uh, for the final vote. Policy, that letter B is policy zero-one-six-seven point eight, board member participation in meetings via technology. So we, just going over the policy and working with Quinn as the policy committee chair, discussing if it still works, if it's appropriate or not, and a couple of things came up. So what you'll see in here is a revised, uh, version of it, just a few small changes, primarily to, and we actually have it redlined, adding the board president and technology services manager, and we listed the title instead of a specific name to be consistent with the superintendent. Actually, after technology services manager, it should say via email. So we specified the type of transaction, so that'll need to be updated. And then, the real discussion needs to come with the next part about how far in advance. So right now, it's twelve hours, which is essentially the same day. What we'd like to do is get to where the, the notification needs to be made. Typically, our meetings are Monday before the weekend, so before one or two o'clock on Friday. Uh, there's been a thought of, should we just do two business days ahead to align with the agenda posting deadline? Should we do that two days ahead? That's an option, or we can do, you know, one o'clock, the business day before, how that works. So we really wanted to get everybody's feedback on that, um, see what's, makes sense, and then we'll, we'll go from there, so.
What is, what is, um, where's the pain? Why are we changing this?
Right, yeah, what's all involved in setting this up, so why forty-eight hours, I guess was my question.
Well, just in case we need to set up, uh, in case we need to set up the connection, um, to make sure everyone's on the same page, and also for, uh, if there's a potential quorum issue. We've had special meetings, uh, if it's the day of, and we find out that we're only gonna have three people here, it's kind of late notice to do it. If we can get the notice two days ahead of time when the agenda goes out, we know that we may only have two or three people, at that point, we can cancel the meeting, postpone the meeting, check a new date, instead of waiting to the last minute and then scrambling at the last minute. So that's the, that's the thought behind it.
Uh, we talked about, something about getting the connection, we have, you have to be signed up prior?
Yeah, the, a connection needs to be set up ahead of time.
But I mean, but you have to, um, have a, uh, get the account.
Are you using that Google thing still?
It's like, uh, we used it with Kevin, um, where we tested it before and it was, I mean, it's totally depending if you have an internet connection. Where if you're at a hotel, you might have internet, I think he was camping or somewhere.
Yeah.
Luckily, not a internet connection, so it's dependent on that too. I mean, you can always call in, which on speakerphone, we've done that. The, the camera should be tested, that connection where you're going to be shouldn't have been prior. We don't wanna be troubleshooting issues while we're trying to run the game too, so.
So to get the, the visual?
That part of it, yeah, and I would say just two things, I think, um, from our end of it. So part of it is the technology thing, once that's set up, if it's working, depending on where the person's calling in from. What I would say is that if there's some indication prior to that, that might be an option, to only know that it's even a possibility that morning. I, I get that things come up in terms of that, but if a, a part of it is, um, at least a confirmation twelve hours before, but right now, it stands as that's the initial, that's the initial time in which that needs to be made. So even knowing like, hey, it's a possibility, um, right now, because if, if we're sitting there with a time-sensitive quorum issue, that could all of a sudden be like, hey, we need to all of a sudden look at an option date. We've had a couple of things where financial deadlines, whatever that is, has to be there. So even to know if somebody knows in advance that that might be a possibility, they may not be there, and then to confirm it a lot closer, I think that's, that's the concern right now, is that even the initial contact with that being, um, that point when there could be a critical issue is trying to have that two pieces. But I get that stuff comes up over the weekend and, and we get that. I think right now, it's just a matter of knowing that that's a possibility. Sometimes, um, depending upon, you know, it's Chris, it could be Jack, it's just a matter of who, who's there or where it is. We've also had remote, sometimes we've had a meeting at Hales Corners Elementary, or sometimes we've had it at different places, so the location changes. That would be challenging for us to do, as you know, we, we use a, a very different type of setup for the video recording that day, and the technology that's available in this room, if we weren't holding it here, would be a little bit challenging. So I guess I wanna, you know, make sure that it can, and I'm not trying to preclude that, but at least to allow us to make that, so that board member can participate, by at least giving a heads up when it is, I guess. That, that's, that's, um, and that's where, that's what we're looking at in terms of it.
And Jack and Chris, have they wanted to do it?
Well, as of right now, I guess we have a third backup, but...
Pretty much, yeah.
I mean, and again, this isn't something that's obviously used frequently, but it's, let's get it in place so that if it becomes used more often, that we have a set that actually works for everybody. If for whatever reason on, you know, Monday, let's say Chris is out and Jack is out part of the day, and they're trying to scramble to set up the connection, do all that, it could create an issue. If you know ahead of time they can work to do that the week before, get it set up so that Monday, it's kind of easy running.
So should that read forty-eight business hours? Or two business days?
Well, that's why we wanted to discuss it now before we did. It can be, I, I...
It would put us in the middle of the weekend, forty-eight hours.
Yes, so I would say two business days.
Maybe you should say like, if possible, because if something comes up on a Monday morning that somebody can't make it, it's still possible that you can do a connection.
Well, then we can make an exception if need be, if we can get the connection set up.
Well, then you should put that in the policy, 'cause it doesn't say, I mean, it says forty-eight hours, and it doesn't say anything about exceptions or, you know, prefer forty-eight hours or something like that. And then my other question is, is that how many people could call into this? How many people can you set up on this?
We've never done it, but why?
Yeah, I don't know, this, when we met with Neola, this was a policy, if you remember, that Whitno created all by themselves. This was not a Neola policy. So when we went back, 'cause we've been doing some policy review with Neola again, we went back to look at it to see, and we asked Richard when he was here, like, and he said, you know, there are, there are districts that have it, but there isn't, there, there aren't a lot that have that, it was one that you guys had made up. So we're guessing that all those numbered items there was something that this board at some time went through to look at, to create their own, um, specifics on it, to make sure that worked, so. And there is flexibility down below, you know, whenever possible and all of that type of thing, to try to make it there, I guess. The, um, the, and I know, um, you know, 'cause I've worked with two different board presidents now, there were different procedures there, and I think just having it spelled out, like, who all is contacted, because I think, um, you know, the procedure when I came on board was that, um, all three people were, but it wasn't in policy that way, that was just a, a procedure that was being followed. Because there could be a thing where any of the three of us are out and, and, or didn't check the email in time, so I think having multiple people on can make sense, especially if you're looking at quorum issues. And that's the procedures that we've been following, it just hasn't been in policy with, so I think the multiple people, um, is just something we've been doing, and, and I think in reviewing of it, realize that it probably should be in writing that way. And I get the, I get the challenge, I don't wanna eliminate somebody there. I think it's just a matter of whenever possible, you know, that whole forty-eight hours, and then to confirm. And I think, you know, there's some people like, hey, there's this possibility I might be out of town, but there's also emergencies over there. So I guess it was just a matter of, and again, hoping that people will, um, have, you know, have that, if they know in advance that it's a possibility, at least giving a heads up, because it does make, you know, if there's a closed session and you need to have a quorum, or, I mean, uh, in terms of that, because if the person isn't gonna be here live, then you, you may make different, you know, depending upon what the topic is, there are just some decisions that might at least, knowing that event. So I guess it's somehow putting it in there that sooner the better, if people know. Um, I guess in trying to make sure that we're preparing for that, so. It's a discussion item, we know that the in-writing piece had to be there, and who's contacted, 'cause it's a procedure that ever since I've been here has been followed. So I guess the timeline part of it is just a matter of, um, giving at least some consideration.
I've never used it.
Yeah.
I don't, probably won't ever use it.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, there could be a time where there's two people that are out and are trying to do this, so. And if we don't address it in the policy, like, first come, first served, or, you know, whatever.
Right, and that's the technology, 'cause I know some people have thought it was gonna be FaceTime or something like that, and it's not. It's a very specific, I mean, it's a very specific technology that we use. I mean, and you can always call in, but I don't know that we can come, I don't know enough about the phone system if we can conference two people in.
Do you know if we have the capability, do you know even if we have the capability to do multiple?
You can conference it.
I do not know that through the video conferencing.
Okay.
We'd have to test that. The phone, I would guess that we could have a...
Yeah, I'm guessing this phone set allows you to conference it, 'cause I think all of them have our phone sets.
Well, I think that really says that we need more than twelve hours. If by chance, you know, we have an emergency or someone has an emergency, twelve hours to get that done and do their normal workday. It's putting a lot on other people.
We're trying to make it as accessible as possible so we can try it out in advance, and if, and I, I guess we don't want it, we don't wanna feel the pressure that it's on us if we couldn't get it done. If, if we could've tested it out, or if there are multiple people, like, one person might have to use the phone, one person might have to use the video thing, it's just trying to work that out when people have advanced notice. And I get that there are emergencies at the last minute, I would think. You know, a lot of times, two days, people at least have an indication if they are, if it's a possibility at least. And that was just, we're just wanting to make sure that it's not on us if all of a sudden, uh, that we're not eliminating a person for participating.
I think, I think that's the key, is that right now, there's the expectation that everyone's work will stop to address this, and we've gotta get out of that cycle. If there is an emergency, someone may not be able to be there, if they can do it, great, but it's not gonna be an expectation that it has to be done because there's a notification the same day. Sorry. The, so the tie-up piece is the wifi connection or internet connection on the person who's not here? That's the part that has to be tested?
Preferably, uh...
Okay, so...
What we used with Kevin was a, a software called Google. And he had to make sure that he could download it, set up an account, and then we basically set it up and we made sure that we could communicate.
Does that have a cost to it, to just download and set it up, like it's...
No, Google was a free, basically, uh, app.
Okay, so it would make sense if we all had it and at least had it on a device to kind of eliminate that part of it.
iPad, Chromebook, you know, with different platforms.
Yeah, sure.
Getting it set up is the, the issue.
And you had to have that in order to communicate?
Well, I already had it anyway, and that's what, uh, Eric set up when I was in China. And that's what he used, so I'm sure we could use any number of things, depending what device you have, but that was through the iPad, so that's what we used. But yeah, you had to set up an account, he more or less did it for me at the time, but I don't think there's much to it. It's just whether or not the connection works wherever you are.
Any other comments on it?
I'm a little concerned about what we're constituting an emergency. Because as board members, we have an obligation to be here when there's a meeting. If we are unexpectedly called away from work, work, and need to be out of town, it happens. And sometimes, there's gonna be reasons that you can't make a meeting, and that, I would think, would be an appropriate use of not being able to make a meeting. If it's, if it's a family emergency, then the focus should be on the family, not on the board meeting you've missed. So, I don't think a request of forty-eight hours or a request of one o'clock central time on a Friday is an unreasonable one, or what we're trying to do, because in and of itself, participating by technology is an accommodation, not a requirement. So, because the board member's asking for an accommodation of staff, that's main focus is operating the school district, I think as much heads-up time as possible for the staff of the school to set something up is, is a courteous thing to do and a reasonable thing to do. So I'd rather have a one o'clock Friday afternoon being a deadline, and up to the discretion of the IT department and the superintendent if they're going to change that.
Very well put, but I don't know if we wanna say a Friday at one, 'cause if we, maybe we have a special meeting.
And that's fair, but whatever lead time at one o'clock...
So one PM the business day before the meeting.
Would be a little bit more appropriate of a use of this.
Okay, so one PM the business day before the meeting date, and then we'll add via email in here as well.
'Cause this is for all meetings, not just, like, this could be a committee meeting or anything?
Yep.
I mean, I don't know if, has anybody ever used technology for a committee meeting?
Once at HCE. During, yeah.
'Cause I think it counts for everything but closed session, right?
Correct.
I mean, I think, okay, I just wanted to be...
Okay, so, um, we'll, we'll get that updated, it'll come back again in two weeks, and we'll vote on it at that point. Any other questions before we move on?
Yeah, I just have one more comment.
Yeah.
Maybe some, somewhere in here, and I've read this, but I don't remember seeing this, that somehow we need to get across that this isn't like, given that somebody can do this. I mean, like, if we can't get the technology, I mean, it says, will be permitted to re, uh, meetings remotely via technology, if at all possible, or, you know, something like that. I mean, I think we have to kind of give ourselves an out on that as well.
It, it did have in there, if we, if the person calling in can't hear everything that's being said, if the people present can't hear the person who's calling in, that...
The meeting will go on.
Right, the meeting goes on without that person, so at least that part of, you know, so to me, that means if the technology's not able to support it or can't happen, then, okay, we kind of go on, we tried.
But I think Nancy's trying to get across prior to even starting the meeting.
Right, if it just doesn't work, if we can't get it to work, or they can't get it to work, or...
Yeah.
Sorry, Paula.
Okay.
We can see, I, I didn't, I, I thought there was two, but I, but I think that there was, maybe I'm thinking of that or stuff.
Letter C. Yeah. Uh, letter C. Okay, so we'll take a look at that, if we find any place to add it, we'll outline it like we did on this one, and, uh, you'll be able to see what the change was, okay? All right, so then moving on, next will be five administrative reports, and A is the monthly financials.
Sure, so a couple of questions from board members that I thought I would address specifically. Um, I did email today about the capital expansion fund, uh, Fund Forty-One, in essence, just because, send the email, there's a lot of discussion on that, so if you're, if you're looking at the document and you wanna know really where Fund Forty-One is on here, it's, it's called the Capital Expansion Fund, so the revenues above would be the hundred and seventeen thousand dollars that I alluded to this morning in the email of what we were bringing into the fund. And then down below, we had budgeted for two-eight-two, uh, for expenditures, drawing that down, uh, for Plex, and for the hundred and fifteen thousand for energy efficiency projects. Those have all been completed, both Plex and Energy Efficiency Project, and we've spent the two-sixty-three of the two-eight-two. So, uh, we're eighteen thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars below that budget in Fund Forty-One, so we're not drawing it down as much as we thought we would, which is, um, positive. And so most of that savings came from, um, the Plex expenditures over at the middle school. Todd did a nice job of ensuring that we were, uh, well under budget at the middle school. So, uh, that, that addresses that, and, and so those dollars are sitting there. As of right now, we would plan on just keeping that there and, um, maybe creating a strategy on what we wanna do next in the next couple of months, as far as eighteen, nineteen, or beyond goes with that, um, Capital Expansion Fund. The other, uh, as far as the budget as a whole goes, and I'll get into the debt in just a second, as far as the budget as a whole goes, on the revenue side, the only major, I wouldn't even call it major, but the concern that we have right now as far as coming up short in revenue would be, uh, um, where we get some past year's aid from Medicaid. It's such a wild card as far as the timing of those revenues that you get from previous years from Medicaid. Uh, we've been lowering that revenue, um, the past couple of years, and, uh, but we have not seen anything yet from Medicaid from previous years this year yet. That's probably very circular for you. Uh, so, there's, there's always a lag in Medicaid, and previous years are recorded into our general operations, we haven't seen anything yet. So, still three and a half, uh, months to go, so we'll see, um, hopefully those will start to roll in for us. Um, on the expenditure side, we continue to watch health insurance most closely. We've had two really good months in a row because we were looking, uh, a little dire through December. Uh, January and February came back very good, slowing our, our losses significantly. Um, at one point, we were trending as much as four-hundred thousand dollars, um, into the, into the negative. Uh, with February and March, that trend has slowed up to about one-fifty, and so we'll see, uh, one-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar in the red. Uh, so we'll continue to see where that trend goes over the next three and a half months, and we're also bringing in, um, haze as we strategize for eighteen, nineteen as well. Finally, uh, we had a question about where we stand with, with our debt payments. And so, uh, on, on this particular, um, on the handout that we provide, we have the Debt Service Fund, um, kind of listed out in both the other fund, um, other fund expenditures. So for this year in eight, in seventeen-eighteen, we have a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars that goes towards two different loans. One was, um, a loan taken out back in two thousand and nine. That was for five-hundred thousand dollars for a Whitno Middle School HVAC project. It was a loan that had zero percent interest on it, and we've been making fifty-five thousand dollar payments for the last eight years. So in eighteen-nineteen and nineteen-twenty, we have a fifty-five thousand and a sixty thousand dollar payment left. And once, um, nineteen-twenty is done, um, that sixty thousand dollars will go back towards, um, general fund expenditures and kind of be freed up dollars that we can use somewhere else, which will be great. Uh, the other loan then that we have out, all of this within the revenue limit formulas, isn't referendum debt. It's, it's all within our general operations, um, is the, the loan taken out for, um, the wifi, not the wifi, but the fiber optic network project. We've made our first loan payments this year, we have three years left on that. That's at about a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars a year. We could prepay that at different times if we would ever have the funds in which to do that. Uh, there's no stipulations on not paying that. The interest rates are pretty low, somewhere between two and a half and three percent. But so, in essence, what I'm telling you is we've got two years left of the, um, um, the qualified loan from, from two thousand and nine, and three years left of the fiber optics, freeing up over the next three years, a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars back into the general operations, which will be very good.
Well, the reason why I ask that, uh, is one I wanted to know, but two, is those are really good selling points for the referendum. I mean, this board, this district, has done well to reserve the financials of this district, of the people's money. We haven't spent, we spent it wisely, to have that low a debt, I mean, I really believe that that is a talking point for the referendum. And we as members should know that in case people ask us. 'Cause I mean, basically, you know, in three years, we'll be debt-free.
Within our general operations, yes. Yep, that's correct, and, and the interest rates are, are very low, on both, zero for one of them. And if those projects truly need to be done, this is a, a, a good way to do it. So, yep, in, in two years, we'll be off of one, which that cannot be prepaid, three years on the other, which could be prepaid should there be an opportunity to. years on the other, which could be prepaid, should there be an opportunity to.
Okay. Thanks, Mike. Any other questions? Okay. Moving on to B, Strategic Planning and Student Achievement Data. Again, we said we're going to keep this as a recurring agenda item as we go forward. May not appear on every meeting, but at least once a month, we'll address it. So, hi, Lynn.
Hi.
Hi.
Do you want, do you want to take it, or do you want me to flip the slides? Do you want me to flip the slides? Just give me a heads up, and I can... Okay. Hello. So, yep, we are going to continue the discussion and, and keep it going. It's been good discussion so far, and we've already acknowledged some of its little painful, little growing pains as we figure out exactly where we are. So, we've been starting everything with our little road journey here, figuring out where are we now, where do we want to be, and, and how are we going to make our way there? So, you can go ahead, Kathy. Or can you? So, the where we are now, as we have said earlier, it's going to take a bit of time, it's been taking a bit of time this year to really figure out where some of our entry points are and what the current reality is, because we weren't, to be honest, really entirely sure when we first started this year as to what some of this stuff actually meant when we're looking at data. Some of the data points you're going to see tonight, we haven't had before this year. So, we are gathering more data, we're trying to figure out, you know, what, what is our most relevant data, and how often are we looking at it, and most importantly, how are we reacting to it and responding to what we see? So, the first thing we're going to look at is the ACT Aspire, and we spent some time talking about the ACT, and everybody knows the ACT, it's, it's been around for quite some time. The Aspire is relatively new on the scene, it's our ninth and tenth graders take the test, and it is basically a predictor for the ACT. It's all part of the ACT suite. It takes on a different format than the actual ACT exam takes on, but it really is sort of measuring where students are as freshmen and sophomores, and kind of saying, here's where they are in comparison to where we think they should be if they are going to be on target for some of those A T, ACT benchmarks that we talked about a couple of weeks back. So, we're looking at Aspire results, and these are our twenty sixteen, seventeen Aspire results, and just because we started the trend of really looking at ourselves in comparison to districts around us, we are looking again at Greendale, Mesquite, New Berlin, and Whitnall. And this is both grades together, so when it says all students, they're talking all ninth and tenth grade students in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. So, you can see that there's percent ready and exceeding, this is the, the bar on the left there. So, when you're looking, there's not huge, huge differences, but again, we're a little bit behind where the other three districts are, which is not where we really aspire to be. No pun intended there. But we, so we want, we're trying to figure out, how do we first address our own needs? And yeah, we want to close gaps with other schools, but we don't want the other schools to be, you know, what we're aspiring to. I got to stop saying that word. We don't want that to be our only goal. So, we really want to look at our students, and where do we have gaps, and what are we seeing, and how do we address that? And hopefully then, some of these gaps will close themselves. Through up here are grade nine, just in isolation, just so you can see how our ninth graders performed last year in comparison to those other districts. Again, it's, it's a fairly significant, so we're looking, we're looking here, again, at the same four schools, and we're looking at English here. So, on the bottom, you can see the number of students that took the test, how many of them are ready and exceeding, and then the percentage. I'm showing you with my mouse, but my mouse isn't up there. And then the next slide is just the same thing with our tenth grade, tenth grade only students. So, it looks, it looks fairly similar in comparison, you can see Mesquite, Norway took a little, little plunge there with their tenth graders, for whatever reason.
Well, isn't that interesting? Because we, we went up quite a bit from our ninth grade to tenth grade.
Mm-hmm, yep.
And this is, reading, you said, or English?
Uh, this is English. Uh, this is...
Yeah, English.
This is English. Yep.
Because that, that's a drastic jump, and we have more students.
Mm-hmm, yep, that's true. Very true.
It was a different class of kids, though.
It was ninth graders and tenth graders last year, same year.
Yep.
Yeah. So, the ACT...
Do we have the cohort data from the two years? We don't? So, do we have the ninth grade data from these tenth grade?
Uh, no, no, we did not, no, we did not do the cohort data, sorry. So, the Aspire, like I said, it's relatively new, and it's an ACT predictor, but right now, the correlations are not particularly strong, when people have said, okay, so, the ACT said student A will get a thirty-two on the ACT, and then the student A actually gets a twenty-six, or vice versa, or scores higher. So, there's not strong correlation yet, but ACT is saying that that's just some settle-in time, because it is new, and that the two tests are different from each other in format. So, a couple of years in, they said that will level itself out. We're trusting the process. But, to your point, we can bring some cohort data for Aspire as well, it's, like I said, it's not been long, but we could go year to year. This is the assessment that I wanted to really spend a little bit of time on, and this is STAR. And STAR is new to us this year, it replaced MAP at our middle school grades, we've been long taking MAP. And STAR is, after doing some research over a few years, STAR is pretty commonly being traded for MAP, just because it is more tightly aligned to forward exam and testing metrics, and seems to be, long-term, once you settle into it, again, a better predictor of how students are actually doing in comparison to standards. So, are those state and national standards are going to be with us for a while, so we obviously want assessments that are going to tell us how we are doing in comparison to those standards. So, STAR is new to ninth and tenth grade, and actually, any testing metric outside of the, this, the Aspire is new to ninth and tenth grade. We haven't had a lot of data points going on for our freshmen and sophomores. So, this is going to take a little getting used to visually, when you see the next screen.
Lynn, before you do that, can you just clarify? So, so ACT Aspire is the statewide test that's mandatory that we give, just like the ACT is mandatory, just like the Forward Exam is mandatory. Those are the statewide tests that will show up on the state report card. Aspire doesn't, well, it shows growth scores, but, so those are the statewide tests that are mandatory. You do not have to give STAR, you do not have to give MAP, it's just a local test that you use to help your data to see if you're in alignment. So, I wanted to be clear that this is not a mandatory test. Most districts give something locally throughout the year to see that they're making progress, instead of just waiting for the statewide test. So, I want to be clear on, if you're wondering, why didn't we give it in ninth and tenth grade? I don't know, we only waited for the statewide test, and partly because MAP did not go off through ninth and tenth grade. When we switched over to STAR, it, it allows you to go through tenth grade, which we're wanting to know data, instead of waiting till the ACT or ACT Aspire. So, I just want to be clear that there's two types of tests here, and the difference...
And actually, now that you said that, I probably should go back and say, the ACT Aspire, they are going to start including that, there's plans to include that on the state report card, because right now, high school does not have a growth score as part of, you know, K eight has a growth score on their state report card, high school does not have a growth score. So, they are looking at using ACT Aspire as our growth score. So, it is going to become a pretty, a pretty heavy-duty thing for us. So, STAR is, as Dr. Olson said, it's our local, it's kind of our local assessment, so we do it at our option, it gives us more data to look at, other than that just one-time-a-year snapshot. So, when we're looking here, when our teachers go in and look at STAR reports, they're looking at scores that, again, align tightly to, and you can see up top, it says Screening Report, Wisconsin Forward Exam. So, STAR is really saying, in accordance to the, the Forward Exam, this is how your students are performing currently. There's color code keys, so you've got your green is your advanced, and your blue is your proficient, yellow is basic, and red is below basic. So, when we're looking here, this is our grade nine, and you can see that we've got percentages, we've got probably, you know, pretty close percentages in our basic and our proficient. We really want the bulk of our students to be in the proficient categories, and that yellow is a, a little troubling at forty percent, where our proficient category is sitting at thirty-nine percent. So, and again, this is how forward would score them, as far as the proficient, or the basic, below basic, or the advanced.
Is that winter or fall?
This is winter, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
This is, so this is what they just took recently. And this is grade ten, so same thing, the, the color blocks look a bit the same, we're still sitting there at the, now we've got thirty-one percent at the basic, and forty-three percent at proficient, which is a little bit better, we're expanding our proficient, our proficient things there. Numbers on the bottom are just number of students that took the test. So, when we're using this data, now we're looking, we're showing teachers now, for the first time at the high school level, they haven't really sat around with data and said, how do we respond to it? Because they're used to getting that one-time-a-year where they look at the data and go, this is how they did, and now they're going on to the next grade. So, good luck to people who have the next grade, as far as attending to some of that detail. Now, we can take STAR, we take it in the fall, we just took it in the winter, and we'll take it again in the spring. So, we've got three data points throughout the year to say, okay, so we see what's happening in fall, how do we respond? Take it again in winter, how do we respond to those kids, particularly in the, in the reds and the greens, and, you know, you've got the ones that are below basic, and the ones that are like, out in front, and how do we kind of move everybody toward that proficient mark? Let's still attend to the ones on the edges.
So, you know who those greens and purples and...
Yes, yes, yes. So, if you break this down, you can go student by student by student, and actually, all those little tiny strands that just look like a big blob, that's just all students in there, yeah, yeah. You can get into some pretty good detail with this. So, if you go on to the next, so now we have reading. So, we had the two, the ninth grade math, tenth grade math, now we have ninth grade reading. Still looking kind of similar, we've got almost equal proportion between our proficient and our basic categories. So, here we're sitting at forty-one percent of our ninth grade students in reading, are are basic, and forty percent are proficient. And again, we've got that little red on the end, which is the below basic, and the greens, which are considered advanced. Same thing if you go on to tenth grade. This one, again, now we've got a little bit more in the proficient category, so as our students move up, we are kind of bulking them more in the, in the proficient. So, when we talk about how teachers react to this now, and Charlie's not here tonight because he was ill, but it would be nice to hear him talk about this too, because he's sitting with teachers as well. When teachers are looking at this, and they're saying, okay, so how do we respond? What they did from fall to winter this year is they looked at all the students that were in that blue proficient, and said, you know, if we're really aspiring to have proficient and advanced population, you know, obviously, we're going to attend to everybody, but let's really focus on our proficient students, and see if we can move them into that upper proficient or green advanced area. So, that was the focus area, they called this their bridge group, that was just there, so it's going to bridge, you're going to build a bridge from one bulk category to the next. So, we were looking at getting blue to green as much as possible. So, if you go to the next one, Kathy, this is where we have to shift a little bit, because now, those previous screens were all how we tied to the Forward Exam. So, now you can see a little bit different terminology, because this is the school benchmark data, STAR sets it up to kind of put us on track to move students from one category to the next, and to be a little bit more attentive to what we need locally with our kids. So, now you see the same color coding, but the words change. So, green is at-above benchmark, which was your exceeding kids, your advanced kids. The blue is the on-watch kids here, because we're going to put these kids on watch, we're going to try and move them to the next category. Yellow, basically, these are the categories, the numbers you can see, the scores. If we were there in yellow, we were looking at them for interventions, and red would be an urgent intervention. So, those are the students that we really want to step in and give them some either one-on-one, or some small group, or just really pay attention to how they are working. So, we're targeting these on-watch kids that are in blue. So, the color coding's going to be the same, but I just want you to just pay attention to the words. So, now if we go on to the next, this is going to be our ninth grade math bridge group. These are all the kids that started in blue. So, they all started in blue, the beginning of the year, and our goal was to move them into green. And you can see, it's, it's done pretty well. So, we've got the green kids taken over, we've got two that stayed the same, we've got one, two, three, four, six of them actually went a little bit backward. So, now teachers are going to say, well, why did we go backward? Is that a true thing? Is it a testing thing? Did we have a bad day? Is it really a content thing? So, that's on teams now to go in and find out what happened to those yellow students, because we were trying to get everybody out of the blue and into the green as much as possible. So, if they got the green bars, that means that they have now moved up into that at or above, above, above benchmark category.
So, the on-watch, or the, it looks like the percentile rank is forty?
Below, below, yes, below forty, yes.
Okay, is that something that they said, or is that something we can...
We can manipulate that. STAR gives you, they give you suggestions, and so, for this first go-around, while we're getting used to STAR, we took their suggestion, but we can move that however we want, and say, you know, once we get a little tighter with it, we can change that and move it in whatever direction we, we choose. So, then, we have our tenth grade math bridge group. And again, so we took, we took these students, that we took some that were in that, that middle group, as we identified them locally, so it's not the same, because that big bulk of kids that we were looking at. We were trying to move them from our on-watch group, in the blue, to green, from fall to winter. So, we've got the green students that did make that move, and now they are at or above, at or above the benchmark that we've set for them. We've got the blues that stayed where, where they were, we didn't see much from them, but they didn't regress, and then we've got one kiddo that something happened there. If you go ahead, then we go to reading, and reading's going to be a little bit of a, of a different story. First of all, there's a lot more students. So, when we looked backward, we were only looking at twenty-five and twelve kids on the previous of this group that we identified as on-watch. Now, we've got forty-three in ninth grade that were on-watch in reading. So, we were looking at, again, these were all on-watch, they were all blue, and if you're looking at, now we've got at or above fourteen, we've got nineteen on watch still, we've got eight in intervention, and two in urgent intervention. This is interesting, because they all started in blue. Now, we've got quite a few that slid backwards the wrong way. Tenth grade is similar story.
How are we addressing that?
I'm so happy you asked that. So, first of all, one of the hypotheses, and we talked about this when we looked at the ACT data a few weeks back, when you look at the math, the math seems to be moving in the, the generally, the right direction. Math department here has really been attentive to really hooking on to those Common Core standards, and really paying attention to how they address the standards in their classes. Our English department, to be brutally honest, has not really held tight to those standards. And those are the discussions that are happening now, saying, if we're not holding tight to the standards, here's what's happening to the growth in our students. So, what are we doing about it? First things, we're having conversations in meetings, team meetings, we're not shying away from the numbers, we're not shying away from what are we actually looking at, and then having the conversation of what do we do next. We brought in on February nineteenth, a gentleman named Dr. Tony Frontier, who is a consultant, he works through Cardinal Stritch, works with a lot of school districts around Wisconsin and around the country and the world, he's getting kind of global, actually, but he's got roots in southeast Wisconsin, and he is coming in and working really intensely with pockets of teachers on, are we, are we aligned with standards? Are we really asking students to do what they need to be doing for optimal growth? Or are we just sort of in a routine of just doing a bunch of things that don't necessarily correlate to what external forces are asking us to really pay attention to? So, we are in a process right now where we are realigning our standards and targets. We've got March nineteenth coming up, where we've got a pretty prescriptive day of what teachers need to do to pay attention to their standards, their learning targets, and their assessments. Dr. Frontier's coming back on March nineteenth to work on some of the people that just need more assistance, if you will. So, we're going to target some populations now within the district and say, he is going to work with you, and we're going to tighten up a lot of this stuff. Much of it's going to be ongoing. In the summer, we have decided that we are going to have some pretty, I shouldn't say this in public, before we said it to everybody, but we're going to have some training over the summer that is going to be highly encouraged slash nearly mandatory, just to make sure that we are on the same page with much of this.
So, are we doing the urgent interventions?
Yeah, and so that's the other thing too, is that the high school has not historically done interventions, so it was always K-five, yeah, definitely, middle school, just the last couple of years, started figuring that out. Nine-twelve has not done it at all, we are now in reading. Math, we're short of staff, so we've got, you know, we've got one person that's kind of spread thin, K-twelve, but we're going to address that through personnel coming into this next school year. So, your answer, the answer is depending on where you're talking in the K-12 system, some much more intensely than others, but we're trying to level that, we will level that playing field for fall.
Is this something that the kids have an understanding about? Like, the students, they understand, oh, I've been identified as an at-risk, I need to work harder... Is this something that the kids have an understanding about, like the students, they understand, oh, I've been identified as an at risk, I need to work harder? Like how, how are they approached with the interventions?
Yeah. So when they, when they take, these tests especially are nice because students can see this stuff right away. Teachers can see it right away. So it's very easy to sit with a student and say, here is where you are currently in reading. Here is where we would like you to be. I mean, here's some short-term goals and so let's set aside some time to work with you. And we do have an interventionist, a literacy coach at the high school that will, will work with those kids. What we don't want to do is, you know, come up to a kid and say, hey, you know, you're really in trouble. Come with me. You know, we really want to frame it out that it's a learning thing, it's a growth thing, it's a test. So we're not even sure how accurate it is. Let us, you know, let us work with you a bit and see where the gaps in understanding really are, if there are some. Some students honestly just don't test well. And when you drill down with them, it's, it's more a matter of they can't take a test. But more often than not, you find where their gaps are going to be and where they need some additional support.
So interventions really doesn't start the second semester though, right?
Which ones?
Literacy at the high school.
There were some for a semester, but they weren't as, there's more now. But there were some that came in because they just, it was a new coach, it was a new system and people did not have an identification. So now that we've seen STAR, they've gotten going.
Do you have a brief overview of what Title One means?
Yes. So Title One is the federal funding system that is based off of your, it's based off of your socioeconomic population. And you receive federal dollars based on that population. Those dollars are used to, they're expressly intended to close achievement gaps for students that have, you know, some, some gap possibilities based on their socioeconomic status. When you use those dollars, it does not necessarily mean you have to use those dollars with students who are socio-economically disadvantaged. You are using them for specific interventions and academic support.
For example, red students probably are the students that we
Those are probably targeted as Title One, yes.
And so understand that that label is just like a special education label, that the parent can opt a student in or out of that. The ones that are identified, we then must provide them services above and beyond their normal classroom. And so at the high school, that, we've been, we have not identified students that way because understand that once they are like a special education, we have to provide them services above and beyond it. Hence why we need to have interventions set up because if we identify any of those red students as being a Title One student, then we have to be providing them services above and beyond what other students get in the classroom. So we just went through that whole process with the middle school in January. And then we need to ensure, and those letters went out to parents, that those students who are identified in that red category, if you will, according to this, that we're providing them above and beyond their normal math or reading. Those are the two areas, not science, social studies, that we're doing that above and beyond. So we use that connect time in the middle school. Next year, the plan is to use that Falcon time, that thirty minutes at the end of the schedule to provide them instruction above and beyond their normal English and or math classes. So those are, those are some things that are sort of out of our control to provide instruction above and beyond what it is, but we haven't had those structures in place. So understand that we're obligated once we've identified those students in that, I'm just going to say red, it's not
Yeah, yeah.
But that's, that's about the number of students that we're looking at. We've been doing that in our elementary schools for a while. We finally have, I think, a system to move forward within our middle school and the plan is to have that fully implemented. We're starting to dabble with it in our high school.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn.
Thanks.
Okay, next will be C, school safety and security.
Yep, we decided we would keep this on and whether it's on every two weeks, but just there were a lot of changes since the last board meeting when I reported on it. So Quinn, Jackie and I attended at the SWSA meeting last week, was that? Yeah. There was a panel on school safety that was put together from the Waukesha and Brookfield Police Department that took a holistic approach to school safety. Then last time, we had a meeting on that Monday night, the twenty-eighth. Both Greenfield School District and our school district met with the Greenfield Fire Department for a couple, excuse me, Police Department for a couple hours to talk about, some of it was active shooter drills, but a lot of stuff. That meeting could have gone on for a long time. So we went through a lot of stuff. I can't disclose all of the stuff we talked about. Obviously, some of that's precautionary stuff, but felt that we really solidified a couple practices, procedures, brought it back to our administrative team and we reviewed all of those in terms of what we're, what we looked at and made some changes right away. We also, I mean, I also did talk with the fire chief and there are some changes even with fire drills that used to happen that they did not used to tell people when fire drills were happening. And now in terms of staff, so it could actually be run as a drill, there's some, right now, some of the practice is changing literally in the last several months, last year definitely about at least having staff have some indication so that when they know, because a lot, a lot of the school's safety incidents are getting people to evacuate a building through pulling a fire drill. So there's some changes in protocols around that. So it's always just keeping updated with that. So that was a very productive meeting. Next Monday, a week from today, we have a district staff professional learning day. And the Greenfield Police Department is coming for the first hour for our district staff to give a school safety presentation to our staff. And then we'll have some time to do some questions and answers. So just I'm working right now with a sergeant to solidify what that looks like. So that's for all of our district staff so they feel like they can get their questions answered. Then on April tenth, our last Parent Learning Academy, our focus on that evening is going to be on school safety. So we're going to sort of emulate the panel discussion that we saw at Brookfield. We thought that was very appropriate in terms of having law enforcement there, mental health professionals from Milwaukee County. And Jackie will be part of it and I'll just facilitate the questions to sit, to talk about a lot of resources, how they work together. And again, try to provide that from a mental health perspective, but then also from the law enforcement things and what we can do to mitigate that. So we liked that, we liked that format and we thought that that would play well here. So that's on April tenth, that Tuesday at six thirty. And so that's what the topic is for our last Parent Learning Academy. We will be having some evacuation drills coming up. Two things with, that we're working with a police department, which is different than an active shooter drill. Want to be very, you know, because we could have a gas leak or you could have a lot of other things in which you would do an evacuation drill and practice that. We're also securing the contracts with our reunification sites. So understand that annually we should be doing that. So in terms of where do our students go to be unified with their parents? It needs to be far enough away because if they would need to, you know, close off a certain site. And so we need to actually practice evacuating to those sites. And actually ask probably for some parent volunteers to like get there and see if they could get there in terms of where would they typically block that off. So we're unique. There are pros and cons of having three buildings very close to each other in proximity. We can't serve as each other's reunification sites. Those are the negatives. The pros are is that our students would be going to a similar reunification site. So if you had, if you had a parent who had multiple students in different buildings, it would be at the same site rather than running all the way around town. So we're working on a lot of the details with that. And they provided for us some paperwork on cards of called reunification cards. And the number one thing that have happened after some mass safety events like that is people not knowing where, where kids are. They're not, they're able to locate them. So if they run or whatever they do. So it's really important that the procedures at our reunification site are there and that we have those ready. So they gave us some good formats for those to use. Since, since the last time we talked about this, two weeks ago, Mike, Chris and Todd did a, a demo of, and we had talked about updating our, our check-in software. We have that at all of our buildings now, but some of us are familiar with a different piece of software. It's called Raptor and it, it's automatically linked into the sex offenders database and it allows you to flag different people for different things. And it also, because it's linked in with your driver's license, that photo is on there when the person is walking around to make sure that. So they've been extremely backed up because it's the number one piece of software out there across the country that it does a lot of those types of things. So they have a lot of bells and whistles. We're trying to decide what we need in terms of that. Things for our volunteers, which are much more common at our elementary schools, those types of things when our volunteer comes. You know, our elementary principals have questions about when they have concerts or daytime events, how do we, you know, right now, we don't really do a lot of checking on the visitors in there. Do we need to change those procedures? Do we need to change a lot of those? Because, you know, we can get hundreds of grandparents and parents coming into those events. And we're really currently not, you know, following, you know, we're, we're doing a different procedure for those events. So those are all the things that we're in conversation with. We did look at, I mean, and Mike is getting some pricing. So right now our students at the middle and high school use fingerprint to, to do their lunch accounts rather than barcode IDs because there was some, this is before my time, so anybody can jump in. Students would use different IDs of different kids for lunch accounts and that got to be a problem. And so they switched over to fingerprint readers. I don't know. Jackie, I don't know how long ago, years ago? I don't know, before?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So middle and high school use that. And so we're trying to decide, we're trying to get costs on those devices because they already feed into the Infinite Campus Food Service Portal. So what would that mean in terms of students leaving? We've talked about open campus. We've talked about a couple of those other things. And so we're investigating those types of devices and costs that are associated with that right now. Next year, with our photography contract, we will make sure that we have the ID printers right here in the school. So when we find new students that enter the school district right now, they go to the photo studio, get their picture taken. And sometimes there's a delay of a few weeks before we get a student ID. That's not an okay thing. So we get a new student in the building today. I know I saw a new student come in and check in with, Kay, we should have the picture taken and here's your ID immediately. So those are some things that were, again, they're just constant things that, that are easy. I would say low hanging fruit stuff and trying to just update our procedures and that. So it's, it's on our daily agenda. What are we taking off today? Some of those types of things that, that we're looking at. And again, as I stated before, we're also doing some other precautionary things, those of which I can't talk about publicly because obviously that's why they're precautionary. So, but we are working with fire and police on a lot of those and just updating our crisis plan right now because all those documents were not in the same Word document. They were sort of scattered all over, charts, phone numbers, all of the updating things. And make sure they're electronic and easy for anybody to update. So that's what I can tell you since the last two weeks ago since I reported.
Do we run, do we employ the run, hide, fight theory?
Yep.
We do.
Yeah. And we need to probably revisit that a little bit, but yeah, because again, those protocols have changed in there, but it is, yep. And it's, it's also very age appropriate with that. And so we have to look at some of that because what we do with high schoolers versus our kindergartners and all of that is a little bit different. And you have to know where your surroundings are because that looks a little bit different at different times, but yep.
And this is going to be a reoccurring gen item?
It is, yep. I, we're, it's going to at least be monthly right now because there are a lot of changes. We put it on there every two weeks for the last three meetings, just so we could keep some of the updates there there. So, yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other?
Yeah, on the, it was about seven years ago that they started doing the fingerprint thing, but you could still use your ID on the barcode if you don't want to use a fingerprint. And some parents had problems with biometric data being collected from their, from their kids. And, and you know, say, the answer was, well, it just turns it into numbers. Yeah, but it's a unique set of numbers for that fingerprint. That's how it's able to uniquely identify that kid. So I wonder if we have checked into, you talked about ID printing. I wonder if we've checked into using IDs with RFID chips. You know, because those, those are extremely common now. I mean, I just got one. So, you know, instead of a barcode, it's an RFID that, and, and just a proximity thing against the wall or, or whatever. And, and with the software that's out there now, it's easy for the picture of the individual to come up on a screen, just like it would for the fingerprint thing or whatever. And so the swapping of the cards wouldn't be an issue, but then you're also not collecting biometric data on, on the kids.
Yeah, we have to check because Infinite Campus, obviously what they're, because that's proprietary to our whole student records system, food service and that. So that'd be a question if they support the types of cards or whatever those barcodes are. So I think that's part of the research that we're doing right now.
It's not a barcode. It's a, it's a, it's a chip that when, it's just like the stuff on iPass and things like that. When it's challenged, it spits back, it's passively, it's just sitting there passive. And when it hits, receives energy, it bounces back with a code.
Again, we're checking with the software and the hardware device and what they support.
I guess what I'm doing is just suggesting that that's one thing that we could check into is RFID in the IDs.
Any other questions? Okay, on to D, referendum update.
Three weeks from tomorrow. So Logan isn't in that, we have, he's making some buttons, but we lost some of the plastic things at the elementary. So I was going to hopefully have all of your buttons on right now. I have like three huge buttons, but these are not quite, they're all not this big, but I have three buttons. So that's our last piece of it. So last week we held three different meetings. One was a public meeting, three people there. And Wednesday was at the Greenfield Public Library. I had one person stop, but she lives in the Greenfield School District. She liked the material and that and she, she would support it. She said if she was one of our residents. And then on Thursday, Mike and I went to Culvers and Hills Corners and we didn't have anybody stop there either. But I will tell you that at the Hills Corners Library, she has a, has a display there and she ran out of the flyers and I probably left her about forty of them. So I dropped off another twenty-five. And so she's been actively, there's a lot of people there. So that seems to be a place where people are asking and gathering and what, whatnot. So that was last week. Our last public meeting is on March twenty-second. On that Thursday, it'll be held in this room here. So that's our last official meeting there. The window, window is, went to the printer last week. Hopefully we'll be in mailboxes sometime this week. So that has two pages of different referendum information, a little bit different. It emphasizes that there are videos online that you can look at. Talks about absentee voting, either mailed or in person. In-person absentee voting starts next Monday. So check if you're in either Hills Corners, Greenfield or Franklin, if you're not going to be here during that week. So you can do either of those processes. And we also are putting postcards that will be in houses. So last one minute reminder, postcards that will have that absentee voting on that will be in households the last week in March. You probably saw some of the yard signs that we put out here. We say vote. We got ten of those. We have some on Janesville Road in front of Hills Corners Elementary and some right here on one hundred and sixteenth street, so.
Do you have any hit counts for those videos online?
You can, I haven't looked, but if right, not right on there because they're all YouTube, they tell you how many views that are on there. But yeah, I mean, we're not talking like thousands unfortunately, but yeah. I am going to Clement Manor tomorrow for a community meeting that I get invited to. And so I'm also going to make a little plug there too, so.
Okay. Any questions, Clements? Okay, with that, we're on item six. I'll take a motion to adjourn our closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute one nine eight five one C to discuss A, staff retirement benefits and B, twenty eighteen nineteen individual certified staff assignments.
Make a motion.
Second. Okay, Will Colville, Nancy?
Aye.
Quinn?
Right.
Stephanie?
Thanks.
Jonathan, aye. Kevin?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Steven?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you all. Have a great evening.